Good evening, council, staff member of the public. May I have a mover and second or to call the meeting to order, please? Councillor Alexander, Deputy Cabral, that the special meeting of the township of Springwater of November 12th, 2025 come to order at 6:30pm. All those in favour of that is carried. Council, any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Not seeing any. At this time, I will call on Director Bedard to present the 2026-27 Mayor's Proposed Budget and Operating and Capital.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and good evening, council. On behalf of the mayor and the township's senior leadership team, I am pleased to present the 2026 Mayor's Proposed Budget and Business Plan. Next slide, please. Tonight's agenda will start off with a review of the mayoral direction with respect to budget preparation. Next, we'll move into the presentation of the 2026 Mayor's Proposed Budget and Business Plan. After that, we will review public feedback received throughout October and November of this year as it relates to the budget. And lastly, Deputy CAO Ainsworth will close off tonight's presentation with a review of the Strong Mayor Budget Process. Next slide, please. Up first on the agenda tonight is a review of the mayoral direction that was issued in June of 2025 that started the budget process. Next slide. On June 19th, 2025, Mayor Coglan issued mayoral direction MDIR 2025002. This mayoral direction was issued to provide direction to staff with respect to preparing the 2026 budget. Specifically, the mayoral direction directed the Director of Finance to prepare the budget and business plan following practices and processes that generally conformed to the processes used in the past. The mayoral direction also included that certain budget activity dates be set, including releasing the Mayor's Proposed Budget and Business Plan. Further, the mayor requested that she be briefed on the progress of the draft budget at her discretion. Lastly, the mayor requested that public feedback be obtained throughout the budget process. With this mayoral direction in mind, staff shortly thereafter developed a work plan for which we accomplished throughout the summer and into the fall, and which culminated with the release of the budget and tonight's presentation. Next slide, please. We'll now move into presenting the 2026 Mayor's Budget and Business Plan. Next slide. The 2026 Mayor's Proposed Budget and Business Plan is comprised of the following components. The tax-supported operating budget is first. This includes programs and services that are funded from property taxation, reserves, and user fees. Some examples of the programs and services that fall into this budget are roads maintenance, winter maintenance, fire and emergency services, parks and recreation, by-law enforcement, and policing. The 2026 Tax-Supplied Operating Budget includes expenditures totaling $30.3 million. New for 2026, this amount also includes program changes. As program changes are no longer shown in addition to the levy on this page, they are included. Next, the Water and Wastewater Rate-Supplied Operating Budget. This includes programs and services that are funded from the Water and Wastewater Reserve Funds and user fees. Only those residents that have access to municipal water and/or wastewater services are impacted by this budget. The 2026 Rate-Supplied Budget includes expenditures totaling $3.5 million relating to water and $3.4 million relating to wastewater. Lastly, the Capital Plan and Ten Year Capital Plan. This includes capital projects staff proposed for the township undertake to construct, renew, or acquire assets to deliver programs and services. In 2026, the Capital Plan outlines $59.2 million in expenditures. In summary, the township's consolidated budget totals $96.4 million in gross expenditures. This figure is presented to demonstrate the magnitude and scope of responsibility of township operations that council and staff are responsible for. In conclusion, and as this relates to the tax levy change, the 2026 Mayor's Proposed Budget and Business Plan requires a net tax levy increase of approximately $1.7 million, as shown on the chart on this slide. Moving to the next slide, the impact of the net tax levy requirement will be shown as it relates to the typical property in Springwater. In Springwater, the typical residential property is assessed at $497,000. Due to the continued postponement of the 2020 reassessment, it is important to note that assessed values are based on a January 1st, 2016 valuation date. While this has created a known disparity between market value and assessed value, all properties in Ontario continue to be assessed on that common January 1st, 2016 valuation date. And further defined, residential properties in Ontario are assessed as of what a willing buyer would be willing to pay to a willing seller on January 1st, 2016. Based on the $1.7 million tax levy requirement detailed on the previous slide, the typical residential property in Springwater will pay $181 more in township taxes in 2026. Factoring in an estimated County of Simcoe tax increase, which was discussed earlier this week, and no tax increase on the education levy, the typical residential property in Springwater will pay $235 more in taxes in 2026. Moving to the next slide, we'll review the 2026 Water and Wastewater Rate Impact. The Water and Wastewater Budget, also known as the Rate-Supplied Budget, has been prepared based on the 2023 Water and Wastewater Rate Study. The rate study requires a 4% water rate increase and a 10% wastewater increase annually, 2024 through 2028. Revenue calculations have been built with this rate increase in mind. Based on these rate increases, the typical water and wastewater bill will increase by $138 annually based on typical consumption of 180 cubic meters of water. Water and wastewater rates do not have an impact on the tax levy, and again, only those that are provided with these services are impacted by the rate change. Up next, we'll review the Tax-Supplied Operating Budget in greater detail. And thank you. The Tax-Supplied Operating Budget includes the requirements for the township as well as its service partners. The township's service partners include the Springwater Public Library, the Ontario Provincial Police, the Nottawa Saga Valley Conservation Authority, the Severn Sound Environmental Association, the Allenville Business Improvement Area, and physician recruitment. The operating requirements for these organizations are consolidated into the Township Tax Levy and the township bills, collects, and remits the funding requirements to its service partners. While the County of Simcoe levy and the Education Levy payable are broken down separately on the annual final tax bill, funding requirements for the township and its service partners are consolidated into the single township levy. So it's important to remember that the Township Tax Levy is more than just the township's operating requirements. It's also the requirements for its service partners. Next slide. The Tax-Supplied Operating Budget is summarized in the 2026 Proposed Budget and Business Plan, followed by budgets and business plans for each township division. The budget book allows for a snapshot of the township's consolidated operations as well as a detailed snapshot of the township's operations by division. Looking at budget pressures for 2026, the township portion of the budget is influenced as follows. Fleet and equipment costs. The township is budgeting for an increased fuel, repair, and maintenance associated with an aging fleet. As fleet and equipment age, it becomes less efficient and requires more maintenance. The township is also impacted by aging infrastructure. There are limited revenue sources available outside of increasing taxation levels to match the rate of inflation at which our costs are increasing to keep our infrastructure in a good state of repair. This is further strained by operating in an infrastructure deficit, whereby limited funding requires pushing asset rehabilitation and renewal further into the future than ideal. The townships also feel on the impacts of slowing development. Presently, there's a lack of growth revenue available to offset service level demands. This includes slowing building permit revenue, planning revenue, and slowing assessment growth. Next, the budget's impacted by debt repayment. This includes the commencement of debt repayment for capital projects approved for debt financing in 2025 and prior. The township is phasing in the impact of debt repayment over two years in order to provide budget mitigation. Last is employee compensation. This includes cost of living adjustments, merit increase, annualization of 2025 program changes, and market adjustments. Moving to the next slide, we'll discuss the impact of policing. While the Ontario Provincial Police are a service partner to the township, they do not typically present during the budget process. Therefore, the impact of policing is brought forward tonight for council's consideration. As council is aware, the rising cost of municipal policing provided by the OPP were of major concern during the 2025 budget deliberation process for municipalities that rely on OPP. In response to concerns raised, the Solicitor General announced in September 2025 that OPP policing costs would be capped at 11% over 2025 levels, excluding any service level enhancements. However, the 2026 billing statement has not been received yet, and the Solicitor General has advised it was targeted for at least some time later this month. That said, the 2026 Proposed Budget estimates policing costs at a full 11% increase over 2025, which in dollars translates to $282,000. Should the 2026 Billing Statement be received in November and be received at an increase that is less than the 11% included in the proposed budget, council at their discretion may table a resolution to amend the budget to reduce the tax levy to account for a contractual decrease. Next slide, please. As we recently discussed, the township's Tax-Supplied Operating Budget is comprised of the township's requirements and its service partners. This chart has been created to demonstrate the net tax impact by organization. This is the first of two charts with respect to how the township has arrived at the $1.7 million net tax levy impact. In order of significance, the township's net tax levy impact is approximately $1.9 million, of which the reasons were just explained, and at the major category level include fleet and equipment, aging infrastructure, declining development revenues, debt repayment, and employee compensation. Springwater Public Library is next with a net tax levy impact of $294,000. This will be discussed during their service partner presentation next Wednesday. Next is the Ontario Provincial Police at $282,000, and again, this assumes a full 11% contractual increase over last year. Next up are the NVCA and SSCA, and their increases are $43,000 and $5,800 respectively. Lastly, the Allenville Business Improvement Area and Physician Recruitment. These funding requirements have no impact on the township's tax levy. The Business Improvement Area is funded separately by a levy charged to the businesses within the improvement area only, and the impact is not shared with the township as a whole. Physician recruitment has traditionally been funded through the Springwater Swing proceeds, of which there is no tax impact. Moving to the next slide, we'll build on this slide to arrive at the $1.7. The top half of this chart carries forward the township's net tax levy impact and consolidated service partner net tax levy impact. However, this slide introduces two measures which put downward pressure on the net tax levy impact. The first is the impact of assessment growth. In 2026, this is estimated at approximately $193,000. This figure is much less than assessment growth realized in the last several years, given that building permit activity has significantly slowed down. To mitigate that the township will realize growth-related pressures in 2026 but will not realize significant assessment growth-related revenue, a transfer from the Tax Rate Stabilization Reserve in the amount of $667,000 is recommended to put downward pressure on the levy impact. This is designed to be a short-term measure until growth-related revenues resume. Specifically, assessment growth returns to levels experienced over the last several years. In summary, factoring in the downward pressure from assessment growth and the transfer from the Tax Rate Stabilization Reserve, we arrive at the final net tax levy change of $1.7 million. Next slide. In summary, this is a repeat of the previous slide during the introduction. Based on that $1.7 million net tax levy impact, the typical residential property in Springwater will pay $181 more in township taxes, and at the blended rate, $235 more. Next, we'll move to program changes. Program changes represent new staffing requests, initiatives, and enhancements proposed by the township and its service partners to assist with contributing to provide a high level of service. The Tax-Supplied Operating Budget includes five program changes, each supported by individual justification forms. The net tax levy impact of program changes have been factored into the proposed levy increase. Please note, this is a budgeting change from previous years, whereas program changes in the past were seen as an addition to the proposed tax levy. In 2026, program changes are now included. Therefore, the removal of any program changes from the proposed budget would reduce the tax levy that has been previously presented. Again, just to demonstrate a change in budgeting process. Moving to the next slide, we'll review the five program changes. Township program changes are presented in order of significance as determined by the mayor and the township's senior leadership team. This prioritization builds upon the 2025 presentation of program changes, where council requested that staff prioritize program changes in order of significance for council's consideration. The first program change in order of significance is part-time fire suppression staff. Next is an outdoor maintenance worker within Public Works, an operator one within recreation parks and facilities, contractual services for IT research and strategy, and an IT technician summer student. The net tax levy impact of these positions is $254,000, and again, this net tax levy impact has been included in the levy increase that has been previously presented. Moving to the next slide, we'll move into the Rate-Supplied Operating Budget. As previously discussed, in 2023, council approved the Water and Wastewater Rate Structure. This structure stipulates a 4% water rate increase and 10% wastewater rate increase, 2024 through 2028. Again, water and wastewater rates do not have an impact on the tax levy, and only those that have provided these services are impacted by the change. And lastly, these rates charged ensure that the water and wastewater systems operate at cost recovery while also funding current future infrastructure repair and replacement. Next slide. The township has contracted the Ontario Clean Water Agency, or Aqua, to maintain and operate the township's water and wastewater infrastructure. The most recent contract renewed in February of 2025 was impacted significantly by inflation over the previous contract. Aqua indicated to the township that their labor costs had increased by 38%, chemical costs had increased by 62%, and insurance premiums had increased by 64%. In turn, these increases were reflected in the new contract. The impact of inflation as it relates to the Water and Wastewater Budget is that it increases the risk the township is not collecting enough through the rates charged to fund infrastructure of repair and replacement. And in turn, this places risk the township may need to increase borrowing to completely require water and wastewater infrastructure works. A new rate study will be prepared prior to presenting the 2029 rates for council's consideration. Next slide. And once again, this slide is presented to summarize the impact of the Water and Wastewater Rate Increases. The typical residential user who consumes 180 cubic meters on an annual basis will experience an increase of $138 over 2025. Moving on, we'll move on to the next section, which is the Capital Plan. The Capital Plan is comprised of expenditures for the acquisition, repair, or replacement of municipal assets. The Township's Ten Year Capital Plan outlines approximately $266 million in capital expenditures across all municipal service areas. This includes $188 million in growth-related expenditures and $77 million in renewal and replacement of existing assets. Broken down further, approximately 70% of the township's Ten Year Capital Plan is focused on growth. These costs represent new assets and/or services that do not currently exist in the township and are designed to meet the needs of a growing municipality. The Township's 2026 Capital Plan outlines $59 million in capital expenditures for this year. Each project included in the 2026 Capital Plan is supported by an individual justification form which outlines the detailed scope of work to be completed and the funding source. Next slide, please. Taking another look at the Township's Ten Year Capital Plan, this slide further breaks out the plan by service area. The majority of the Ten Year Plan is focused on roads and related infrastructure and municipal buildings. This is reflective of the significant cost associated with the construction of Craig Road and the construction of the community hub. Therefore, it should come as no surprise that these two service areas account for the majority of the Township's Ten Year Capital Plan. Moving to the next slide. While the township prepares a Ten Year Capital Plan, only the current year is presented for council's adoption, along with carryforward projects from 2025. The 2026 Capital Plan is comprised of $38.5 million in carryforward-related projects and $20.7 in new capital expenditures. The 2026 Capital Plan summary sheet in the budget book provides a high-level snapshot by project and funding source with totals at the end. And again, individual capital justification forms are available for each project. Next slide. The 2026 Capital Plan shows expenditures that align with the theme of the Ten Year Capital Plan in that roads and related infrastructure and municipal buildings represent significant investments by the township. Over the next several slides, major projects by service area will be presented for council's consideration. First up is roads and related infrastructure. And this represents a major component of the Township's Capital Plan. This includes investments for Craig Road, Mill Street West, John Street, Floss Road 10 West, Wilson Drive, Old Second North, and Bridges 4, 17, and 19, which are located on Vesper Valley, Floss Road 10 West, and Floss Road 11 West. Next slide. The Capital Plan for 2026 as it relates to municipal buildings includes Fire Station 2, which is set for completion in the spring of next year, the Community Hub, the annual facility condition assessment program, the Minasine Bowling Alley, and upgrades to the Allenville Arena dehumidification system. Next slide. The 2026 Capital Plan for Fleet and Equipment includes the replacement of Fire Tanker 45 as well as the acquisition of two new plow trucks. To improve winter control operations, the 2026 Capital Plan also includes road closure trailers, quick attach snow blade, and a tractor blower attachment. Lastly, various end-of-life light-duty vehicles and equipment are scheduled for replacement. The 2026 Capital Plan for Parks and Recreation includes replacing pedestrian bridge 1, which is the Hunter Russell Trail Bridge, as well as a new annual playground upgrade initiative designed to address playground equipment at the end of its useful life. Moving to wastewater infrastructure, the 2026 Capital Plan includes growth-related upgrades at the Allenville Pumping Station as well as the renewal of the Allenville Wastewater Treatment Plant. For water infrastructure, this includes distribution system upgrades. And for information technology, this includes the acquisition of a replacement enterprise resource planning software, which is at the end of its useful life and is no longer being supported, as well as server replacements. Wrapping up the 2026 Capital Plan, this slide demonstrates the revenues for which the Capital Plan is funded from. The majority of the Capital Plan is funded through the use of development charges, debt, and reserves. To a lesser extent, the Canada Community Building Fund, formerly known as Gas Tax, and the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund assist with the reconstruction of township road infrastructure. Lastly, and important to note, approximately $1 million of the township's tax levy is being spent on capital, which is a slight increase over 2025. Moving to the next section, we'll move into discussing public feedback. As directed by Mayor Coglan, public feedback was sought relating to the 2026 Mayor's Proposed Budget and Business Plan. Feedback through the 2026 Budget Tool survey was collected, whereby survey respondents were presented with the opportunity to increase or decrease service levels as well as provide general budget feedback. The Budget Survey Tool was available October 10th through November 7th. The Budget Tool was launched at the Allenville Fall Fair and subsequently promoted on the township's social media accounts. Moving to the next slide, overall, the Budget Tool saw 15 respondents, which represents a new high in terms of budget engagement. We're hoping for more in the future. In terms of engagement by community, six respondents identified as being from Midhurst, four from Allenville, two from Felbston, and one each from Snow Valley, Minasine, and Hillsdale. As it relates to the graph, an average change in service level was calculated based on the survey responses. The red line on the graph represents the status quo, with anything above the red line representing a service level increase and below the red line representing a service level decrease. On average, and it may not come as a surprise given the winter we just experienced, survey respondents overwhelmingly requested an increase in roads and winter maintenance operations. This was followed by increased investments in parks, economic development, customer service, fire, and bridges. The raw data with respect to the survey is published on the council agenda, and talking with my colleagues, I realized interpreting that data on its own is difficult. It's a bunch of numbers. I should have included the Budget Survey Tool as an opportunity to evaluate the data further. So when you're looking at the raw data that's on the website, if the number is a negative, that represents a service level decrease, and if it's a positive, that represents a service level increase. I apologize, I should have included a better key to understand the raw data, but it's there unfiltered for your review. And in closing, the survey may not have seen an abundance of responses, but I think it's important to highlight that staff continually collect feedback each day from council, township residents, and other township stakeholders. This feedback we receive helps inform our internal division work plans, and it helps inform the budget prepared for council's consideration. In the closing, thank you, Mayor Coglan. This concludes my part of the presentation tonight, and I will pass over to Deputy CAO Ainsworth to discuss the Strong Mayor Budget Process.
Deputy CAO?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Next slide, please. I will walk through the changes to the budget process based on the Strong Mayor's powers. So the 2026-27 Budget is the first Springwater Budget prepared under the special powers and duties of the head of council. Under this framework, the mayor is legislatively required to prepare and propose the annual budget on or before February 1st, followed by a statutory process leading to the budget adoption. The mayor would release the proposed budget to council, the clerk, and the public. The council amendment period would commence for up to 30 days. The mayor's veto period would continue for up to 10 days, and then the council override period for up to 15 days, and I will go into further detail in the next slide. The Mayor's Proposed Budget was released on October 24th, with amendments and corrections being completed on November 6th. The amendments made are outlined in mayoral direction MD 2025004. As a result, the 30-day amendment period was restarted. Council is now within the amendment period, which ends on December 5th of 2025. During this time, council may propose amendments to the Mayor's Proposed Budget via motion, simply with a majority support of council on those motions. On tonight's agenda, there's an opportunity for council to propose amendments for consideration. I will confirm that no motions were provided to staff ahead of the meeting, which is why you wouldn't see any listed on the agenda. However, council may table motions this evening. In addition, there will be placeholders on the November 15th and December 3rd regular meeting agendas for further amendments that council wished to bring forward. Once the 30-day amendment period concludes, no further amendments may be tabled. Council may also reduce the 30-day amendment period via motion should they wish to do so. Once the amendment period concludes, the mayor may, up to 10 days following the council amendment period, veto any amendments by providing notice of such. The mayor may also shorten their veto period by issuing a mayoral decision to do so. If the veto period is not shortened, this period would conclude on December 15th of 2025. Once the veto period concludes, council may, for up to 15 days following the veto period, propose a motion to override some or all of the mayor's vetoes. Any override would require a two-thirds majority vote of council. Council may also shorten this period by resolution should they wish to do so. The override period would conclude on December 30th. Once all of the above periods are complete, the budget is deemed adopted by the municipality. If any of these periods are reduced, the timelines noted will change accordingly. So for example, should the mayor issue a mayoral decision on December 8th to reduce the veto period effective that day, the override period would then end on December 23rd. Next slide, please. After this evening's meeting, a special meeting will be held on November 19th to receive the service partner presentations. And as mentioned, on November 19th and December 3rd, there will be placeholders on the council regular meeting agenda for any further amendments for council's consideration. During the override period, there is a meeting date within that period that council could, a regular meeting date, that council could also propose override motions to any vetoes. Mayor Coglan, that concludes our presentation, and we are available for any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you. At this time, council, we will move to our operating budget. If there's any, actually, if there's any questions on the process, we can direct those to CAO. actually, if there's any questions on the on the process, we can direct those to CAO Ainsworth before we go back to the budget. So any questions on the operating portion for staff this evening? Counsel Alexander?
I don't know if this is specifically just to the operating or just the budget in general. And I did reach out to Director Bernard today. But I think it's important for the public to know just because we did have a revised budget versus what was initially posted. So Director Bernard, could you please just outline the changes between the original budget that was posted and then the revised? Just in case folks didn't have a chance to look backwards.
Yeah. Director Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through you to Counsel Alexander. The the budget before council was amended through mayoral direction MD IR 2025 005. I'll read the I'll read from the mayoral direction. I have some comments that that elaborate on the changes that were that were made. The the first change was clarification of inclusion of all program changes in the 2026 budget. And this change was to adjust the budget to reflect program changes be reflected in the base budget and in the overall tax increase as presented. This change was necessary to adapt our budget to the Strong Mayor Budget Process. New for 2026 and outlined in my presentation, to comply with legislation, program changes will now need to be removed from the budget, in which case the removal of any program change or program changes will lower the tax increase as presented. The next change was inclusion of the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund allocation increase of approximately 154,000. This change was done to adjust our OMPF allocation to actual. The original budget included an estimated OMPF allocation. When we build our budget, we don't get the the actual funding amount until later after the budget was published. When we realized on October 31st, 2025, when we received our allocation notice, we were actually receiving $154,000 more. We thought it proved into adjust the budget to actuals. The next is inclusion of an additional 167,833 of funding from the Tax Rate Stabilization Reserve. And this change was done to provide additional budget mitigation. The next change was removal of service springwater contract position in the amount of 110,512. And again, this change was to provide additional budget mitigation. And the last change is library budget is inclusive of program changes given it is a board. And this change was done as I just sorry, my apologies. The library program change is now included in the library based budget. And their funding requirement is now consolidated into one line in the budget. As the library is a board, council approves the total amount of funding allocated to the library and the library board determines the line by line allocation.
Follow on?
Thank you, Director Bernard. So general question, I'm not sure who this would go to regarding the removal of the service springwater contract position. Did we have we decided to remove the position because we're not moving forward with the program? Or I'm just looking for the reasoning why. We had a pretty fulsome discussion about it. And I thought that it was a good program, so I was surprised to see the position removed. So if we could get further clarification on that?
Director Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to Counsel Alexander. You know, I I 100% agree that the service springwater initiative is a valuable and needed addition to our staff complement. At this time, I don't feel it's an appropriate addition with with some of the pressures that the township's facing. And also, within finance, we're adjusting our service levels accordingly to provide additional additional and enhanced customer service without this initiative. The the change was also proposed reflecting that we're in a period of very slow growth at this time, that we we decided we could defer this this enhancement until such time as growth picks up and the service levels from growth are realized. Right now, we're able to manage, in my opinion, that service level and providing enhanced customer service with the team that we have. And this will give us a better opportunity over the next several years to further define what that service springwater looks like and then launch that when the population starts to increase again from growth. The other component that that drove the deferral of this is that when we went to market in fall of last year to seek, you know, a qualified individual for this position, we were unsuccessful with even receiving a candidate that we wished to interview at that time. The the market did not provide the opportunity for us to proceed with even the interview stage. So that again gave us an it kind of made us rethink that whole process. So it's not that we don't think it's needed. We just don't think it's needed at this time, and we'll revisit that when our service levels increase associated with new homes being built.
Counsel Alexander and Deputy Cabral?
Thank you. That's my last one. And then kind of my other question, which we spoke about earlier, was there were three new positions added in 2025 outside of budget in terms of kind of salaries and benefits. What is the total amount? Because in my opinion, this should be included on the tax increase because it is a tax increase versus the year prior.
Director Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to Counsel Alexander. Yes, three new positions were added in 2025 outside of budget. In terms of salaries and benefits, these positions account for approximately 580,000 or 2.75%.
Deputy Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I just stepped back here to one of the slides that talked about taking money from the tax stabilization fund. I think the figure was about $650,000 if I saw that correctly, a little bit more than that. In respect of that, and you may have shown it, I was doing some leafing and I apologize. But 1% increase for 2026 equates to what? How many actual tax dollars?
Director Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to Deputy Mayor Cabral, a 1% tax increase equates to 211,000.
211,000. Thank you. And with respect to the the service springwater, I recall the discussion with respect to that was the fact that staff didn't have the opportunity or the ability. And we were trying to resolve that and allow them to focus more on their own areas of expertise, management, dealing with their own duties. So I I'm a little bit, I'm having some time, a bit of a struggle with that one because that's the reason why we got that individual. We were looking at that individual. I can certainly appreciate that maybe we didn't find a proper candidate for it. But I'm looking at that as 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 a way to, as you say, you know, try and offset some of the pressures that we're experiencing. But it really is to the tune of $100,000 or so. So when we look at the tax rate stabilization fund, 650, add that 100,000 to it, you know, it's $750,000 that we're kind of borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, and I get that. But what it leads me to think about is the years where we would have supplementary funds that we were looking down the road at what was going to be getting or what we would be getting from building permits and new growth. And finally, now we're in the position where a lot of members of council had continually warned about that. And now we find ourselves in the position where we don't have that to rely on this particular year in 2026. It may not be there for 2027. So I I'm not pointing that out to say, you know, kind of like I told you so. I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention because I always have struggled with that, not knowing when that money was going to dry up or knowing exactly where we're going to be when that went forward. It also leaves us in a position where we have some departments that are not, I don't know how to phrase this, basically carrying their weight as far as generating some income back to the township. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. But I did do a little bit of consideration earlier on when we talked about budget. And, you know, I kind of went back to 2018. And I went back to 2024. And what I looked at was our population base in 2018 was roughly 19.7, and we had 66 employees. And with 2024, our population basis in 2023 was roughly 22,700. And the only reason I bring that up is when you look at that data and you look at the percentage increase from 2018 to 2024 in employees from 66 in 2018 to 96 in 2024, it's an increase in staffing levels of 45%. But when we look at the numbers of residents, we're talking about maybe 3,000 people. So it just seemed to me that the people who are actually front facing out on the roads and a new subdivision goes in, that kind of thing happens. There's new roads, there's a new bridge, we need additional staff for new parks. We can quantify that and say, we need another truck, we need another operator. But what I'm kind of seeing has been the trend for the last several years is much of the new funding is is being put into, I guess, administrative situations. And I I just bring that to everyone's attention because it's a big leap. When we compare it with the percentage in properties, when we were back in 2018, residents per employee at 19.7 was 298 residents per employee in 2018. Now it's 298 residents and it's 75 employees. So and when we looked at the properties too, the difference in the ratio for properties, while properties only increased by roughly 2,800 from 2018 to 2024, our staff increased substantially. And although many of them were needed for that, when you look at what we used to have and what we have today, there were roughly 30, 30% were required. The other 60% seemed to be 66%, 33. And then 66% were ones that either it was legislated positions or administrative positions that we found ourselves requiring or optics that required or suggested that we needed additional staff. So I'm wondering if going into 2026, we might actually have a review of that and those comparators and see where we're putting our resources, especially our staffing resources, to make sure that we're actually allocating them to the right areas. I'm not saying I disagree with with the budget. I'm just saying when I look back to where we were and where we are today and the increases in properties and the increases in in residents, there's a disconnect in my mind how far we've come with staffing as opposed to the number of properties and the increase in population. Just wanted to bring that up. So thank you for the indulgence. And hopefully, Director Bernard, we may have an opportunity to speak about a little bit further. And I can show you some of my data because I really would like to share it with you. Thank you.
Any further comments on operating? Any comments or questions on capital this evening? Deputy Cabral?
Thank you very much. I I'm just doing a bit of a comparison here to what the costs are to run the operate operate the library for a year. And looking at some of the bridges that we've repaired, you know, $780,000. It just seems to be a lot of money for that. And I'm just wondering if there might be opportunity to provide a little bit of an answer as to why it's $780,000 when, you know, we kind of already started on one particular bridge at Bishop's Park. I would like to commend staff though for addressing the issues on Floss Road 4 West from Atkinson Road to Clearview because that has been a terrible, terrible stretch for years. And I'd hazard to guess that there may have even been some claims for tire damage and things like that over the course of the last few years. The other one I would like to commend staff on is finally bringing 2021-05, which is Floss Road 10 West, Crossland to Vigo. That has also been a terrible stretch of roadway that staff have done a really great job of trying to keep it maintained. But truth be told, we probably spent a substantial amount of money when hopefully this is going to look after that. But it just ends up costing us more money going forward. And that was actually one of the items that I wanted to see on the capital budget. So I appreciate staff putting it in there. Thank you.
Counsel Garwin, and then Counsel Alexander?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to CEO Forfar. This has been, when I, when I, when I look at the capital 2026 capital plan, and this is something you and I have discussed at length as well regarding not only the new projects for 2026, which is estimated at 20.7 million, but also the the 38.5 and carry forward of those capital projects. I think we've seen that as a bit of a trend in regards to a significant carry forward from year to year. I know I've been pretty clear at this table for three budget cycles. I guess this is the fourth budget cycle now around. If we are taxing our residents, let's move these projects forward. I also understand there becomes a capacity piece as well internally. So could you potentially speak to, and I know you're just getting up to speed as well with this budget and with the corporation, but some of the plans that could be and will be put in place to ensure that we see some significant success in regards to not necessarily that 20 million, but the 38 that's been carried forward?
Through your shift to Counsel Garwood, excellent question, and I appreciate the context provided. Just as a team internally, we've done a number of internal discussions around the capital carryover. We certainly do appreciate that it is a concern. And we have, quite frankly, very literally in the last couple of weeks, put together some integrated plans to really hone in on the the historic capital. We would like to see the books cleared off. We want to see projects advance. And moving forward, we want to make sure that the capital program is right sized to the community. So you can expect to see some significant action to move forward the rest of this year, as well as going to 2026 and 2027 in particular, to play catch up and move these things forward. There's a great series of projects that council has funded and supported, and we certainly want to see them come online sooner than later.
Follow on?
Thank you, CEO Forfar, and I I'm really excited to hear that. I know we've had those conversations, but not that I'm speaking for everyone at this table, but I know there's many projects that are part of this budget last year, the year prior, that are very important. We all earmark a few in our respective wards that that make our residents excited and 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 we're excited about. But also, we know that as these projects sit, the cost of them just continue to rise. And we end up having to go back to our residents for more and for more and for more. So it's that that balance of expectation versus what we're actually asking the taxpayer to provide. So I I appreciate the commitment and I look forward to to seeing that success. Thank you.
Counsel Alexander?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. And further to Counsel Garwood's point, and again, CAO Forfar and I have discussed this as well. It would just, I would encourage next budget, which we're not sure who will be here for. But if we aren't comfortable that we can move these projects forward, then they shouldn't necessarily be on the budget, in my mind. Like, again, I get you're always going to have a few outliers because of things you can't control. But when we're looking at a larger amount of carry forward than we're adding this year, I think it's prudent to put what we think we can actually get done. And then be just be realistic about that, you know, we know it's a concern and it will be coming, but probably it's not going to come this year. So we're going to put it on next year's budget, just again, to Counsel Garwood's point of potentially overtaxing. So I would just encourage that as advice or a request moving forward. And then the only other piece that I will ask Director Bernard's thoughts on this, but given that we did do the three hires out of budget, I do personally feel that that 2.75% should be included in the total tax increase rate because we never accounted for it last time. So it is a tax rate increase. So I do feel, to be transparent to the residents, we should be saying it's a 10.72% tax increase, unless I'm doing the math wrong in terms of how you gave it to me.
Director Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to Counsel Alexander. The the tax increase associated with those positions is built into the tax increase presented for council's consideration today. So it's not, it is included in there. It's just not detailed separately as 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 many of our costs are detailed separately, but it is, it is there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Deputy Cabral?
Thank you. And I I meant to ask this question. I didn't, I wanted to know what the balance in the tax rate stabilization fund was and what our debt was prior to this budget. And what our debt is, well, the debt is shown in there, but what would be the difference between the debt we carried prior to looking to assume additional debt on this particular budget? So those two questions, please?
Director Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to Deputy Mayor Cabral. I'll start my answer with requesting that staff can have the opportunity to follow up with you at the next council meeting with this information. What I will comment on is that when 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 we closed out 2023, What I will comment on is that when, when, when we closed out 2023 earlier in October, we committed approximately $3 million into the Tax Rate Stabilization Reserve. When we close out 2024, we're anticipating around $2 million going into that reserve. So over the last two years, we're, you know, we're right around that $5 million range. 2025 surplus deficit, this has been a much more difficult year, both in terms of township operations and in terms of we're seeing less supplementary revenue. We're seeing less investment income. We won't have a surplus near the previous 2023 and 2024 levels. You know, we're still hoping for a surplus, but certainly this year has been more challenging than than in the past. One thing that may influence 2025 is the ice storm claim we submitted to Municipal Affairs and Housing, the reimbursement for those costs. So I can't comment on 2025, but certainly, you know, the the balance is, you know, it's gone up approximately $5 million over two years with with respect to debt. The debt proposed in the 2026 budget will carry an annual repayment of approximately $700,000. So that $700,000 represents debt of approximately 9 million included in this budget. But we can certainly recap and bring you back more solid numbers for our next budget deliberation meeting.
Thank you. Follow on, please.
Bond.
Thank you, and I do appreciate your answer, Director Burdard. I, you're very, very knowledgeable, far more knowledgeable than I am. I'm a kind of guy who just looks after his own budget and makes sure his bills are paid when times are good. If you're a businessman, which I'm not, and that's one of the reasons why I always had a position, I didn't want to have that risk is when times are lean, you need to have money in the bank. And when times are good, you want to still put money in the bank so that it's there for the lean times. I agree with you that there has been a number of years where building has been going great. We've been dipping into the future dollars that were available to us. And even having said that, when the surpluses were available, this council could have quite easily, you know, thought about doing something else with those funds, other additional projects that we'd put on hold and whatnot. And we chose not to do that because we wanted to put in for rainy day. My fear is, come next year, if we're in the same position with stagnant development and it's not just something that's for Springwater Township, but it's across the province right now. And folks aren't buying homes, so builders aren't, you know, putting shovels in the ground. They're waiting until this storm passes. And my fear is if we've got 750K, we didn't renew that position. Are we going to be in a position come next year where if things don't turn around, we're going to be dipping back in there again? And we have to make up the shortfall because any way you look at it, these are still, you know, tax dollars, you know? So I just want to know if 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 there's a plan in place, should that occur? Are we looking at the possibility of reducing services or even the possibility of reduction in staff? That's the fear I have going into 2027. So just wanted to share that too. And I don't know if you have any comments on it, but I'd appreciate hearing them if you do.
Director Burdard.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to Deputy Mayor Cabral. The the risk you share with with respect to the Tax Rate Stabilization Reserve is the risk that I shared with the Township Senior Leadership here today is, you know, it has been a very prudent decision of council to put those surpluses in these reserves for that rainy day. And that rainy day really with respect to soil and development is now. We, we don't have a general sense of when that development will will pick up and homes will be taken or homes will be or permits will be taken for new homes. But we do know there still is a lot of interest in building in Springwater. We saw that with the last council meeting with the MZO Berry Hill, you know. And with respect to assessment of growth, that doesn't just occur once the home is built and occupied and the supplemental tax bills issued to that homeowner. It occurs much earlier in the development process. So when that land is scraped with respect to site servicing and getting it ready for development, there's an increase in taxation realized right then. So we, we've seen that with a number of properties within the township where developers are getting ready to develop, they just haven't pulled that trigger with servicing, which would lead to the building permit. So there is that incremental tax revenue. And while building permits, you know, we're hoping those pick up sooner, we still will receive some of that incremental revenue in the near future. Will we go from 200,000 that we're experiencing this year to 700,000 we experienced last year? You know, that part is hard to say, but the the prudent measure of council and putting that money in reserve will assist us with mitigating because we know we're going to get back to there. There's so much demand in terms of new units available and, you know, the multiple MZOs we have that it really is a matter of time before that goes back to the historical trends we've seen.
Deputy Cabral.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. And I just, on that point about the development pieces, you know, our development up on on Gil Road there, the Rose Corp and the Forest Main, you know, I, they've always seemed very, very eager on moving forward. Is there any sense from staff, either Director Harvey or Director Russell, that that may be something that we can anticipate moving forward? Because they were so eager to go before, maybe they still are. I'm hopeful that they are.
Director Russell.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through you to council. Staff certainly appreciate the conversation and to echo Director Burdard's comments. You know, planning has been as busy as we've ever been. We're seeing applications even up until last week, we had applications for 777 units. I can tell you that the Midhurst Heights subdivision is approaching registration for Phase 1A. We have not received building permits yet, but they are imminent. We are having discussions, but they will be coming in for the first phase, which I believe is 310 units. So I've got a pipeline of 500 units currently registered that could go to building permit today. I've got another pipeline of 500 units that are imminently going to be registered in the next three to six months. So there is almost 1,000 permits worth of of growth out there right now. And I've got another, I'll say 2 to 3,000 that are draft plan approved. And the township has a total, and we'll be reporting through this with the township's growth management strategy. We've got a total of about 14,000 units on our books total, whether in various stages of approval. So the growth is out there. It is going to come and it's a matter of time. Thank you.
Counsel Moore.
Thank you. I just a couple of questions, if I may. First is to Chief Kirk, if I could ask about the fire hall. I'm curious to know if the fire hall is on budget? Or if, I know we had a bit of a blip earlier, but are we proceeding as as planned and how the budget is going? Also, my second question for you, I might as well go ahead with, is the fire suppression position? Or or two, I don't know how many positions that is, it said part time, so. Thank you. Chief Kirk.
Through you, Mayor Coglan, to Councilor Moore. In relation to the part-time firefighters, that would be two firefighters, five days a week, 52 weeks of the year. And they can be spread out as we see deficiencies in manpower at the certain stations and also to assist with mandatory certification training. Because our division chief is, he's working a lot of hours in regards to the provincial mandate, so. And your second question, sorry? The fire station, if it's on budget? It is on budget. I met with with our consultant and our Director of Finance about, I'm going to say, five weeks ago, and we are on budget. So.
Counsel Moore.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Coglan, back to Chief Kirk then. Do we have an estimated finish date or tour date? Chief Kirk.
Through you, Mayor Coglan, to Counselor Moore. That's a moving target. Unfortunately, it's not going quick enough for me or my deputy. And we've seen some good, good movement in the last month. We're trying to get it closed in before the bad weather gets here. But it's, I'm impressed at the quality of construction, although I'm not impressed at the time it's taken. We've been fighting, well, the the winter wasn't conducive to building, and we've had a lot of delays in that regard. But they are making some time up. So I would anticipate they're still shooting for April 2026 to have substantial completion.
Counsel Moore.
Thank you. I'm actually impressed, given the the climate with tariffs and cost of supplies and everything being so unpredictable, so I'm happy to hear that. I didn't know exactly what portion of the meeting is the amendments for something that I would like to add to the budget.
If there's no more, any further just comments or questions for clarification, we can move on to amendments.
Just more of a comment from a capital piece. And I do want to take a step back because I don't want my comments to be perceived as negative. I think there's a lot of positives as well that have come from the last couple of years, but especially the last budget, right? And I just, just listing a few things off the top of my head that were some projects that were completed this year, right? Or or are in progress. We know the Phelpsen Roof is a big one, the Grenfell Hall, the fire hall that was just noted, the Enten Mills Community Hall. I feel like we've done half the roads in Elmville and in and around the area and many upgrades as well to the Elmville Arena. So those are a lot of positives in addition to the added staffing complement from the last budget that we're seeing pay dividends now. So again, that's, that's more of just a thank you.
Deputy Cabral.
Counselor Moore speak on her.
So I was just going to finish up the comments and questions, and then we would move to forward to formal amendments.
That's why I.
Okay, so at this time, council, we can move to our formal amendments and I'll turn to sorry, operating, so amendments of the operating. Counselor Moore.
Thank you, through Mayor Coglan. So my amendments this year are mighty, not truly. I have bollards. So I'm looking for two sets of bollards, one for Glen Huron and one for Seddon Road. Outside of that, then the ice rink tarps have been taken care of already by Director Culver. I would have liked to have seen an actual increase if in the park upgrades. Park equipment is so expensive, so expensive. And our park in in Snow Valley, the Lowlands, Snow Valley is in need of some attention, as well as the Grenfell Hall Park and and Pavilion. So just to put that out there, not asking for anything, just prioritizing. That's it for my asks. Oh, I also, sorry if I may, to Director Burdard, I wasn't able to open the discretionary fund link that you sent. I don't know if anybody else had a challenge, but I couldn't see what was the balance you did. If you could please review that too for me, so I know that has to be, by the end of December of this year, it has to be used, right?
Director Culver.
I, I thank you, Mayor. I just thought I'd take the opportunity as a follow on to Counselor Moore's comment regarding playgrounds. The amount that's indicated in the budget is the beginning of a long-term program for playground replacement where we don't really have a sequential strategy for playground replacements. So the idea is that we would begin that process. So each year you'd see an amount that starts to move these playgrounds into CSA compliance and a whole pile of other very important needs.
So this time I'd be, sorry, looking for a seconder for Counselor Moore's Counselor Fisher. And then turn to Kirkings, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I've drafted a motion for Counselor Moore based on the bollards request. That two sets of bollards be included in the 2026 operating budget for the following locations, Glen Huron and Seddon Road. I would just ask if Director Harvey would be able to provide an estimated cost? If possible, for me to include in the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. The estimated cost for those would be approximately $1,000. And just for clarity there, yes, it can totally be incorporated within our operating budget.
And per, thousand per set or?
Per set.
Thank you. Counselor Garwood.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. And just on that, of course, I'm fully supportive of the the baller project. Counselor Fisher and I brought this forward initially, and I know they've, they've spread across municipality. For my memory and and councils, either Manager Eberhard, who I see is in the back here, or Director Harvey, can we speak to where we last landed on additional bollards? Because I don't want this to start to bleed, but I would like more bollards, and I think others will as well. So just to keep things as clean as possible, can we maybe provide an overview and or a process where this could be spread out across multiple wards potentially?
Director Harvey.
I think I'll defer to Manager Eberhart since he sort of spearheaded a lot of that work.
Manager Eberhart. Manager Eberhart.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. To answer the question there, and I, I agree with Counselor Garwood there, and I would like to see a bit more of a formalized process. Hopefully, bollards are included within our traffic calming policy currently. There has been some motions and resolutions there for installing additional bollards in specific locations that did not meet the criteria outlined in the traffic calming policy. Those were implemented in 2024 and in 2025. There was, the last motion, I believe, was that there would be five sets of bollards per ward at the discretion of meeting with each of the ward counselors. I believe our senior engineering tech did reach out at the start of this year to to kind of get any inklings on any changes from the previous year on those five locations. I'd be happy to see something like that and a bit more of context around where they can and can't be installed. Maybe a comment there as well for Counselor Moore. Seddon side road may potentially be a very difficult one to install bollards on because of the agricultural use of that road. The the bollards do have lane narrowing, so they do work well in urbanized areas. It's difficult in a rural cross section like that when you do have agricultural vehicles using it. So something that we can talk about maybe for a bit more in context as well. Thank you.
Counsel Garwood.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. And again, not to muddy the waters in the process. And if Counselor Moore is willing to amend the amendment, she's shaking her head, no, kidding. I think it might be useful if we potentially allocated funding for each ward, understanding there's already a certain number per ward. I know certain wards have more than not. I think Ward one has five to seven. I believe Midhurst is in the same, our Ward five is in the same situation. So along with the formalized process, and again, maybe that's outside of the budget discussion. And maybe that's something that members of council, we can bring forward as a recommendation and collaboration with staff, but so we're not picking them up here at this table. I think the process in which we endeavored upon in 2025 was very helpful to meet with staff, have those conversations. So it's not 100 different motions at this table. I think cleans up the process. Also, we want to make it easy from a, from a staff and council perspective. So I would be happy to see maybe two per, if they're 1,000 each, then we're, you know, we're allocating $10,000 total. Should wards choose to not utilize them, then then I am assuming that funds then gets transferred to the Tax Rate Stabilization Fund or goes into other traffic calming measures. But if that's an amendable amendment potentially, Counselor Moore, I'd be happy to second it.
So then the amendment would then be that $10,000 be allocated to traffic calming measures in the form of bollards with two per ward. Does that cover it? Counsel Fisher.
Sorry, just for clarity, that's two additional. Perfect, okay, good. We're not losing it.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through the chair to Manager Eberhart. What has happened to the funding we had allocated to the automated speed enforcement? I assume that program now is dead, and could we not just transfer those funds from there to this fund?
That Manager Eberhart?
Hey, Mayor Coglan, through yourself to Counselor Thompson. The model that council did choose when we initially wanted to implement automated speed enforcement was a revenue sharing model, which was a net zero program that we did not include any tax dollars for, but rather revenue sharing based off the net fine revenue. There was staff soft costs such as staff time allocated to where we got to in the program, which was very close to implementation. But unfortunately, with the direction from the provincial government, that program will not be going forward at this time with, with the provincial legislation.
Counselor Garwin?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. And just adding on to what Counselor Thompson had noted, and again, not to make this completely about traffic calming, but I would put a, put a bet forward that it's probably the thing that we often collectively hear about the most in our communities. We've had this conversation at length. I believe we were unanimous in the support of the automated speed enforcement program. And obviously, we've shared our deep concerns with the removal of that program, but understanding there's nothing we can do about that. Manager Eberhart or Director Harvey, can you just provide a quick update in regards to how we budget for all traffic calming measures, not just bollards? I know that's been something that members of council have felt are effective, and I think the public has as well, but it's not just road bollards. It's, you know, I understand there's signage, there's obviously staffing that comes with that. We hear from the public often, you know, speed bumps and this and that. There's so many different options out there that we either haven't dove into or we have and we've tested them out. So can you maybe just speak to that process a bit more? And with the ASC program off the table, there's a void to fill in my perspective.
Manager Eberhart?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through yourself to Counselor Garwood. Thank you for the question. Staff do, or in our operating budget, we do have allocation for traffic calming measures specifically. As most of you guys have, I'm sure have seen the various rate or feedback signboards that have gone up, oversized signage. We do also look at when our capital program, so aside from just operating by our capital program, when we do reconstructions, we also look to see if there's an opportunity for potential traffic calming measures if warranted in those areas as well. So it's not just an operating cost, but at times a capital cost as well. So yes, we do already budget for some. We have increased that budget over the last couple of years due to the additional motions for the bollards and some of the other traffic calming requests. They are coming pretty frequently, especially with some of the new developments coming through. We, it does take, there is the first implementation to purchase the actual goods to install, whether it's a rate or feedback sign or bollards, but there is also ongoing operational costs as well associated with that, whether it's replacements of them or whether it's the actual installation, removals for winter, et cetera, et cetera. So there is an ongoing operational cost as well, aside from the one-time purchase of them as well.
Counselor Garwin?
Thank you. And just to follow on on that, more of a comment and a thank you. I understand it's also a tedious process, right, to find the correct locations, to have these conversations. We received significant feedback from the public, some positive, some negative. So again, I want to thank you and the Public Works team for the efforts associated with that. Your staff has been incredible to work with. And overall, I think we're gonna, we're gonna get there and we'll continue that forward into '26. So thank you.
Director Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. And just to add on to that, council should be aware as well as our master transportation study and plan also outlines a lot of initiatives related to that that was brought forward in 2025 here for council. There will be a number of initiatives that we look at through that documentation and adoption of that plan as well. So just be cognizant that we're going to explore a number of things that were outlined in the master transportation study.
So council, the motion is that $10,000 be added to the operating budget for, to fund two sets of bollards per ward. Counsel, all those in favor? And that is carried. Deputy Carrow?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I don't have a motion per se. I did have conversation with Director Harvey. It's just actually an issue that kind of, there's a bit of a disparity between, I guess, the fire department when it comes to health and safety in terms of carcinogenic, you know, when they're burning the diesel fuel, starting their pumper truck. And what I came to the realization was that we have two yards where our regular public work staff are engaging in basically the same type of activity. They're going in, in particular in the wintertime, starting the diesels. I know that from past experience that the alarm would go off at Yard Two on occasion during the winter months when, when the guys would be called in for winter maintenance operations to, you know, clear snow. So there's, there's no dollar figure per se. I'm wondering if there might be opportunity to, at least, I'd like to have dialogue or at least some conversation with Director Harvey to see what kind of dollar figure we'd be looking at. I know for the fire department, it was somewhat expensive, but at the same time, I think we have to look at all of our facilities where these vehicles are being used and see if there's a way to mitigate the health risks for our staff. So I guess I'm just putting it forward. I see there's opportunity down the road to a couple other meetings, but I did want to bring it to the forefront. I'm not asking to put the motion on the floor now, only because we don't have any idea what the cost would be. But I think it's something that I would like to see personally myself happen sooner rather than later. Hazardous work conditions in particular for a number of people who have occupations that expose them to certain risks do come to mind. I know that there is for firefighters, you know, working with carcinogenic fumes and whatnot, the work that they do, and certainly starting the diesel trucks and whatnot, and having those contaminants in the fire hall is obviously a hazard. We also know that recently paramedics have also been looking to promote some issues that they're having with respect to potential carcinogenics that are affecting them. So that's the reason why I've put it forward. I think I may have even spoken about it before over the last course of a couple of years. So I'm putting it forward that I likely will hopefully bring something forward with respect to this. I don't think it's cheap, but I do think it's about time that our, our staff can benefit from what council can do for them health-wise.
Counselor Garwin?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and apologies. I should have mentioned this during the capital discussion, but more of a question slash comment either for Manager Dean or Director Culver regarding the facility condition assessment program. You know, I think this is an important fund. I spoke to it last year, and my concern with regards to how we reduced it in 2024. Can you speak to the $809,526 and, and how that fund is utilized to enhance various municipal facilities across the municipality?
Manager Dean? I don't think those ones are working and these ones aren't. I don't think these ones are working either. Yeah. You're not wrong. Manager Dean?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through yourself to Counselor Garwood and the rest of council. So through the facility assessment program, we have a large list of projects to be completed in all facilities. So that document basically goes through kind of red light, yellow light, green light in terms of items that need to be addressed and long-term and short-term and projected dates on when things should be replaced. So from a staff perspective, we have looked at it from a life safety, structural building, anything that could cause further damage to buildings. So doors, windows, roofs are some of the main items from a priority standpoint, as well as other items interior. So again, interior doors, HVAC systems, water, water heaters, et cetera, in the different buildings. So a lot of the projects that we are focusing on currently are some of the major projects. So we have some overhead bay doors in some of our fire stations. We have internal doors in multiple of our facilities. We have a roof at one of our facilities and some windows, as well as some other minor interior, which we can provide a further list of those, but just off the top of my head. Those are some of the major items we are looking at. There is some smaller items. Some are done internally, more through an operating budget when it's kind of touch-ups for items such as painting or more or smaller minor items within a facility.
Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and thank you, Manager Dean. Again, more of just a comment further. Again, I think this fund specifically also is something that our residents see, right? They touch, they feel, they see it every single day, that the facilities that they love and they utilize, right? From the fact that most of our halls are aging and need some love, and I think that this, this goes a long way. But also being able to look at things as a more of a holistic approach. I know Director Culver and I have had that conversation at length regarding the fact of, you know, removing the, the process of these one-offs and being able to, to look at some of these projects and push them across the line. Again, I use the Grenfell Hall as the perfect example, right, of, of a, of a space that, that was able to, to get to the finish line. So I think there's lots left to do, right? I think each of us respectively in our wards have one that, that we want to focus on. I know I do, but anyway, thank you both for that information.
Thank you. Are there any other operating amendments to the operating budget? Amendments for capital? Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And I'll, I'll turn again to CAO Ainsworth for outline of the process.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. As the 30-day amendment period ends on December 5th, council will have an opportunity at the next two regular meetings to propose amendments to the operating or capital. There will be a placeholder on the agenda, on both agendas for such. The same process should council wish to have it listed on the agenda. You can provide your motions to myself prior to the agenda's release. You may also table it at the meeting. I would just suggest if you do have an amendment that you are contemplating, please reach out to staff. We can work with you for costing, appropriate wording. Director Bedard can, can provide some more context on its effect on the budget, and we can, we can ensure that your motions are properly worded and reflective of exactly what you're looking for prior to the meeting. So there are those, those next two opportunities for you.
Right. Okay. Not seeing anything further, council. May I have Counselor Alexander?
Hi, I, I would like to waive procedural bylaw. Again, not entirely sure how that goes, Clerk Ainsworth. Is it, I don't know if it's a motion, if I'm just say I want to do it and we vote on it.
Deputy CAO?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. It would be a motion that would need to be moved and seconded that the, that council temporarily waive its procedure bylaw with providing the reason why as well would need to be in the motion.
Counselor Alexander?
Okay, so it is for a motion without notice.
And a seconder? Counselor Fisher? Counsel, all those in favor? That is carried. Counselor Alexander?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Whereas on two occasions, the mayor has purported to veto council decisions on November 5th, 2025, and November 10th, 2025, whereas the mayor vetoes the confirming bylaw of the two meetings where council passed resolutions C446-2025 and C452-2025, which are not bylaws. Whereas the mayor's veto did not have the effect of vetoing the resolutions C446 and C452, the resolutions stand. Now therefore be it resolved that the official position of Springwater Council remains and continues to be, A, Springwater Council opposes the Berry Framework proposal, but supports the Moore motion of November 5th, 2025. B, Springwater will proceed with the court actions to quash the strong mayor, to quash the mayor's strong mayor bylaws and proceed with the judicial inquiry. C, Loopster Nixon continues to be counsel for the township of Springwater despite MD 2025-005 and MD 2025-006D, and that the provincial facilitator and Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing be advised before going. So understanding that this is a never-ending loop that we continue to go down. At the end of the day, I feel that it is important that if passed, the minister understands the position of this council, which is why I'm bringing it forward to go ahead.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you.
Wait, sorry, I don't have a secondary for that. Just a seconder. Counselor Moore? And then Counselor Moore?
Thank you. So it, it sounds to me like we are just reiterating decisions that have previously been made, but everything got a little difficult to suss out. I'm sorry.
Yes, from my perspective, from my perspective, it's muddy here, and I just think I would like the minister to know again, if passed, where the majority of council stands on this issue.
I'll go. Yeah, Counselor Moore?
Thank you. So after reading what we received today not long ago, and there was an issue with the confirming bylaw. That's, is that right? Is that what I read? Sorry, or did I read that in your direction from this morning? I could be, I could be getting confused. So my point is that we would then not vote on a confirming bylaw for this.
Counselor Alexander?
That would be my understanding. Again, just from my understanding of the mayoral directions is that if we have a confirmatory bylaw, this piece is removed.
Counselor Garwin?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Couple of things. The first would be, I would love to see a copy of the proposed motion, understanding now that this has occurred two meetings in a row. It is challenging to vote upon something without being able to, again, fully review the details. So respectfully, if that could be communicated out. Secondary to that, I do agree with the statements that this is muddy. And the fact that council is confused, let alone the public, the amount of questions that have come from varying perspectives on this that says, where does Springwater stand? What, what is the direction that has occurred either at this table or through alternative direction? I, I am concerned that we are going down a path of a loop over and over and over again. I am concerned that we are spending a considerable, considerable, considerable amount of time and money on this matter to go in a circle. So through the mayor to the deputy CAO, can you outline what this direction does? And again, going back to my comments from the other night regarding Monday's motion, does this provide new direction? And why don't, and again, this, the second piece you probably can't answer, but there is a veto process that does exist that is outlined in the legislation. So if there is a concern, I'm not quite sure why we aren't just utilizing the veto process that is, again, not Springwater's veto process, not Springwater staff's opinion, not either of our lawyers' opinions. It's the only route outlined in the province's strong mayor legislation. So again, if we are worried and focused, as we should be, on being transparent and following process, that is the process that's outlined, not continuous motion after motion after motion. Because respectfully, Counselor Alexander, I do suspect your motion will pass. And if I'm going to use my magic ball, And if I'm going to use my magic ball here, I do suspect that then there will be another veto. And then come next week, there will be another special meeting and we will continue this process. And that does not clarify anything for the public. That does not allow staff to focus on other matters. And that consistently spends the only pockets that it pads is lawyers. So Clerk Ainsworth, can you provide a bit of clarification there? Sorry, Deputy CAO Ainsworth.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. I'll answer the the question about the override. So the legislation does provide the ability for council to override a veto within 21 days of the veto of the within 21 days. There is a two thirds majority required to override a veto. And that has to be done by motion at a meeting. That is the process outlined within the the municipal act. Now, as far as the effect of this motion on 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 events that have taken place over the last week or so, I'll I'll just go point by point within the motion and and try to chunk it out that way. So A reads, uh, Springwater Council opposes the Berry Framework proposal, but supports the Moore motion of November 5th, 2025. This section, I had advised on Monday evening with one of the parts of of the motion that was proposed then. As the Berry Framework Agreement was approved by bylaw of council, tabled by the mayor through through the strong mayor's legislation, that bylaw still stands as it was duly approved by the one third requirement of council. So that piece there, as I had advised on Monday, would need to be a reconsideration of that bylaw. That bylaw also within it had the statement of notwithstanding any previous decisions of council. I might not have that wording exactly correct. And that's what affects what is being referred to as the Moore motion of November 5th, as it superseded that motion. B reads, Springwater will proceed with the court actions to quash the mayor's strong mayor's bylaws and proceed with the judicial inquiry. So that stems again from the motion that council approved on Monday, however, was vetoed, which overturns that motion from Monday evening. C, the Loopster Nixon continued to be counsel for Springwater despite the mayoral decision. Both mayoral decisions. A-again, the mayoral decisions have been issued, which reversed that piece. And then the facilitator be advised of the foregoing that that I have no comment on. Procedurally, as as Counselor Garwood mentioned, it is, it is a bit of a loop. I I wouldn't be able to provide any other, any further comment on that.
I'm gonna go follow on and then to Counsel Alexander and then Deputy Corr.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan, and yes, just follow on. Again, I guess my concern is when I, when I look at the motion, and thank you for sharing that and communicating that out to council now. When I look at items in the motion like quash the mayor's strong mayor's bylaws, while it, again, I look at it almost like we could put a motion forward to paint the sky purple, but it doesn't mean the sky is purple, right? So I see this as, we might be saying that, but does this follow procedure? I'm not talking about the adjustment. I'm not talking about the strong mayor's individual bylaws here. I'm honestly asking the question around procedure. And I understand our deputy CAO has advised us to the length that we can, but I'm not sure next where we turn. We clearly are not going to hire a third lawyer and ask for another opinion. I think we're all conditioned to receiving legal opinions at this point. So where do we turn? And I understand maybe the province has been a bit silent on a response on this matter. So whether it's requesting additional guidance or support here, personally, I don't know where to go next. I don't know what questions to ask, and I don't know how to explain this to the public because I myself have so many questions around the process. So again, my concern is that we're just going to continue to go around in circles here, regardless of a new council direction that says we're going to squash the mayor's bylaw, but that is not the outlined process. So it might be what it says in the direction, but I don't believe that that follows the legislation that has been outlined. Unless the veto is being vetoed, which would require a five member vote of council, from what I understand. So if that is the desire, then that should be the process forward respectfully.
And before I do turn to CAO Forfar on this, if there's no further, we've moved past the budget proceedings, I think this conversation could last all night. I don't know, CAO Forfar, if you want to excuse your staff for the evening, I don't think that there's going to be any more comments or questions for them.
Through your worship members of council, I would, I would appreciate that very much if we can, perhaps.
You're more than welcome to stick around for the the conversation. You know what, why don't we do that? Why don't we take a five minute break and then, is that okay?
Thank you.
And counsel, we are now resuming. We have a motion on the floor by Counsel Alexander. I don't think we need to reread it, but I guess my my own comments on this again is, yes, this is, this will be a cyclical process. There is a means through the strong mayor's legislation. Every strong mayor bylaw that goes out, every direction that goes out is done so with legal consultation to ensure that the corporation is protected. As far as the Moore motion, the province already has it. In my opinion, it was an opportunity to vote on something. And this map has not been assessed by our staff, this map. You're not gonna, the minister's not gonna get it and go, okay, let's just erase the last two years of negotiations and we'll go with the Moore motion. I think the message has already been sent. I understand that we don't, or that members of council don't like the Berry proposal, and I understand that members of council don't like strong mayors. But here it is. And I'm using it exactly as it was designed. I'm following the process and I have great advice as we're moving through it. So I, this cyclical process that is before me, we, there is a veto avenue if you choose to use it, utilize it. But, Counsel Moore, or sorry, Counsel Alexander.
So just a couple of things. So the reason personally, I'm not going down the veto process is because I'm questioning the validity of the actual mayoral direction. So to me, that's not a veto. A veto would be, I don't want, it would just be, I don't like what you did. This is, I'm questioning the validity of that actual of the mayoral direction. So that's kind of the reason that we're in the cyclical process. And again, I will own my piece of the cyclical process. Just as in, with no disrespect, Mayor Coglan, you need to own your piece because you're putting through new mayoral directions. This council has differing opinions on this. And the validity of using those strong mayor powers, we have different legal opinions. For me, this is again, just ensuring that the province understands where certain members of this council sit on this issue. I would, yeah, and that's it.
Counsel Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. I do think the province is probably pretty clear as to what's going on in Springwater. I'm sure everybody on the planet is these days. But respectfully, 36 hours ago, we did have this conversation, understanding not every member of council has an opportunity to speak, and by no means am I trying to suppress that. But once everybody has had the opportunity, I would like to call the vote. I do think it's prudent that we do move forward. I will have a secondary motion that I will also be tabling following the vote of this. Nothing controversial.
Uh, the question for me is there's two different things to look at. One is strong mayor legislation and its usage provided it is used. In the legislative manner that it was designed. The second one is what a judicial review is, and a judicial review is to simply have opportunity for anyone, including council. To review a decision that was made. And, uh, there's a, the distinction here is that because of the legal opinions. I believe that a judicial review is warranted in order to ascertain whether or not strong mayor powers were used in the manner for which they were actually legislated. And, uh, to allow judicial review to take place to determine that fact. Um, and that's why, uh, it is. So it's really, uh, a way to validate. A decision. Not necessarily to, uh, suggest, uh, that strong mayor powers are good, bad, or indifferent, just in this particular instance. I, I would like to know whether or not strong mayor powers were actually used in the manner for which they were actually legislated. And, uh, to allow judicial review to take place to determine that fact. Um, and that's why, uh, it is. So it's really, uh, a way to validate. A decision. Not necessarily to, uh, suggest, uh, that strong mayor powers are good, bad, or indifferent, just in this particular instance. I, I would like to know whether or not strong mayor powers were actually used in the manner for which they were legislated. Uh, the other piece to Mayor Coglan is with strong mayor powers, you have the ability to sit in your office and, um. Make mayoral directions and, uh, and, and such, uh, which is your prerogative under strong mayor powers. The legislation is in place. I may not agree with it, but I recognize it and, uh, I, I will abide by it. However, um, for council members as a whole, we always require to schedule a meeting. Schedule an opportunity and all of these, uh, strong mayor powers are, um, in line with, um, timeframes. So it's very simple for the mayor. However, it's not so simple for council as a whole to organize and, uh, schedule a meeting. So. Uh, actually, this worked out, in my opinion, not too bad because we're already here for budget. So, um, that's my only. Comments on this. Um, I see it as two specific different things and the judicial review. As a matter of fact, Mayor Coglan, I would suggest that your vetoing is actually interfering and obstructing. With a legal process that this council, as a majority of council or council as a whole, has a right to do and make.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you. Could, uh, could we call the vote like, like Counselor Garwood had said, please?
Yeah, I was just giving members that have not had an opportunity to speak, the opportunity to speak. Moved and seconded all those in favor. All those opposed. That has carried. Counselor Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um, understanding we have waived procedure. In quick conversation, and this was just a, a last minute thought here with the deputy CAO. Um, I'd like to table a motion this evening. Understanding that I do have concerns regarding this circular process and to try to keep things respectful and on. The rails. Um, I'd like to see this council. Reach out to the province directly. I'd like to see a letter be sent to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Along with a chronological order of events, including, um, stronger powers that have been utilized, including the motions that have been passed and then overridden. Uh, the vetoes, et cetera, since November the fifth. Also indicating that we have exhausted our internal advice that we can be provided through our clerk's team. And we have also exhausted, not only from a taxpayer dollar perspective, um, but from a legal perspective. The resources that we have on that side as well. So I would like to see the province weigh in here. They might never respond. It might be fluff. It might do nothing. But I do see it as personally, in my opinion, our last option to get a bit of clarity here. Hopefully. It guides us a bit moving forward. Um, and if anything. It provides the province with a timeline as to what has occurred in Springwater over the past week. They should be aware as we are a partner of theirs and, uh, we have been working closely with them over the past two years. So. Um, I would be happy to take any suggestions or recommendations to ensure that this garners support.
Counselor Fisher?
Just a, just a question through you, Counselor Garwood. Uh, so it would just, I think what you're suggesting is almost a chronological order of what's transpired. Uh, vetoes, uh, so forth, but would that also include, uh, legal correspondence as well?
Counselor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I'd say provide it all. I don't think anything shouldn't be provided. I think the province, the minister. His team, his staff should have a fulsome view as to everything that has occurred. I don't think there's anything to hide or not share. If we want to provide the full picture, then we need to provide all of the information.
Following?
Yeah, actually, I, I do agree with that. We should provide a fulsome picture. Should we go ahead with this? Now, uh, would council be able to see that letter before we send it? Or the correspondence? I guess it would be a package.
Counselor Garwood?
Uh, thank you, uh, through to Counselor Fisher. Um, I, I'd like to see it as well, but I also don't want to hold up the process. I think. We clearly have had a desire at this table for timely, quick meetings and decisions. So I don't want this to be held up. I'd like this to be done immediately and sent. Tomorrow to the minister. Um, so as long as it could be communicated with council. Um, and maybe feedback can be garnered by a certain time and date. Um, understanding it is a tight turnaround time. I know we've done so in the past, but still for it to go to the minister, um, I don't want us to have to have another meeting this week. Thank you.
Deputy Cabral and Counselor Moore?
Um, thank you, Mayor Coglan. But if we're gonna give, uh, the minister a fulsome, uh, opportunity to review, uh, I would suggest we'd have to go back, uh, probably prior. To this term, I would certainly suggest, uh, and a friendly amendment would be to go back to at least January twenty twenty-three.
Is this on, if this is on strong mirrors, then just go from the beginning of, of the strong mirrors?
Well, strong mirrors was May the fifth. But this boundary adjustment piece and discussion has gone on long before that. So, and, and I guess really, Ma- Mayor Coglan, if, if, if you would, uh, agree or say that you won't veto. You know, then I can be more than happy to support, uh, Counselor Garwood's, uh, position too. It's, you know, uh, it's, it's, it's kind of like. I'm pretty sure the minister knows what's been going on. As far as the deadlock is concerned, but at the end of the day, this council majority has the right to seek a judicial review of your decision.
And, and again, the, the portion that allowed and permitted the use of strong mirrors is it was tied to provincial priority. It said that the develop, that the. Negotiator, sorry, that the framework agreement and that all, everything would stop until it was seen by a judge. So that was a delay in provincial priority. There's nothing in here about provincial priority. There's no way strong mayor's powers would apply. There would be no veto.
Follow on, Mayor Coglan? That's the exact purpose of a court injunction, Mayor Coglan. So that the judge has an opportunity to determine prior to letting anything else go forward.
Counselor Moore and then Counselor Garwood?
Thank you. Could I just ask that, uh, Counselor Alexander's motion be also included in this package? Simple ask. Thank you.
CEO, Ainsworth?
Um, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um, the motion, I, I, I will read what I've drafted. Um, based on Counselor Garwood's request, uh, the council hereby directs that a chronology of events slash decisions. Along with all legal correspondence slash opinions received that have taken place since November fifth twenty-five regarding the Berry Boundary Adjustment Matter. Be sent to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing advising the township has exhausted procedural advice and legal resources on the matter, seeking guidance and advice from the province. Now with that, um. Being read, uh, as is, uh, staff could undertake to write that letter tomorrow. Staff would be strictly putting facts within the letter. And, and could definitely provide a copy to council, uh, for review. Um, I would like it to, I would just like to be clear that. We wouldn't be seeking opinions on what would be. Used appropriately within that. It would simply be facts of what has happened from November fifth. If that date is brought back, um, depending on how far. The timelines that council would be requesting would not be realistic for, for staff to, to meet.
I'm sorry, I was at Counselor Moore, Counselor Fisher, and then I'll go back.
Sorry, just for clarity, you said November fifth, that we're going back in terms of chronology back to November fifth?
Counselor Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. I, I know there's been alternative dates thrown around. My, my goal here was not to. Provide a timeline to, to the minister about the Berry Boundary Matter. The minister should be fully aware as to how we've gotten here. He will also receive a report from the facilitator regarding. This information and recommendation. This is more around the legislation that the province has provided. This is strong mayor powers focused. Understanding that strong mayor powers has been utilized to. Adjust the direction that the majority of council has chosen to go. To hopefully. Remove this back and forth, this confusion, the misinformation out there, the province can weigh in. So. November the fifth, to me, was the appropriate date utilized, understanding that that's when the. Vetos started regarding this process. Sure, we could go back and provide everything through May the fifth. But I don't believe it's all necessary information. So I would like to hold with the November the fifth date.
Following?
So, so essentially what I'm hearing, Counselor Garwood, is sort of almost a snippet in time rather than going all the way back to the beginning. Snippet in time from the fifth. Uh, I guess my, my biggest thing would be that we do include, as you said, the legal, uh, opinions as well with it. So, um, yeah.
Should it be the desire of council to write to the minister to ask on the appropriate use of strong mirrors? That is not tied to a provincial priority and there would be no veto. If Counselor. Alexander's motion from earlier tonight is incorporated in this, it would be tied to a provincial priority and there would be an opportunity to veto. So. I would like to keep them separate so that this is still advanced would be my preference. Deputy Cabral and then Counselor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um, I don't see, uh, a problem with including. I don't see a problem including, um, Counselor, uh, Alexander's, uh, motion. Because you still have opportunity to veto it, but at least it would provide knowledge to the minister of that motion. It doesn't have any weight with the minister. The other thing I would like to suggest is that I think there might be some reluctance on the part of the ministry to. For lack of a better term. Engage in matters of this particular council's direction. So, uh, i- if it's gonna go, I would suggest, uh, if it's dealing with strong mayor powers, we go all the way to May first and the times that strong mayor powers were used. Uh, because, um, uh, I believe that strong mayor powers could have been, uh, well, I don't even know if it was mentioned in any other ones, uh, on more than one occasion. So, having said that. I would like it to go back right to May first and I would actually like the wording that, uh, Counselor Alexander has suggested being incorporated into it. It doesn't carry any weight, Mayor Coglan. It simply advises the minister. Uh, of that particular motion, which by all intents and purposes looks like it will be vetoed once again. So. I, I, I'd like to, we already voted on one. I, I'd like to be able to, uh, vote on this one. I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think if you're gonna do it, you have to do it and incorporate everything that is applicable to it. So. That's, that's where I would stand on it.
Counselor Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um. Again, I, the goal here is to provide a full chronological order, even the directions that were overridden that no longer. In my opinion, exist as direction from this corporation. I still believe that information should be included because it is part. So regardless or not, if. The direction tonight, while I didn't support it, is vetoed or not, again, not part of this conversation. Provide it all. If there's nothing to hide, which there isn't, and I don't believe that there is, then we should provide everything, have the minister review it, and I completely agree. I do not think the province is going to most likely provide a firm statement on this, but I think it is our responsibility to go down every possible avenue to. Provide some guidance and some advice, not only for the seven of us, but for our staff and for the public. So. I think it's pretty simple and straightforward. Again, not trying to rush things, but I will also call the vote on this. I think it's pretty straightforward and I, I hope there's seven votes.
Going to need a seconder on this, please? Counselor Thompson? And that here, council hereby directs. The, that a chronological and events and decisions along the legal, along with legal correspondence and opinions received. And has taken place since November fifth regarding the Barry Boundary Adjustment Matter be sent to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to advise. The township has exhausted procedural advice and legal resources on the matter, seeking guidance and advice from the province. Counselor Moore?
As a compromise, I'm just wondering, Deputy Mayor Cabral, if, if they just included just the mayoral decisions, just a copy of the mayoral decision since May first? Okay, that's easy, that's easy enough, I think. Okay.
It's, it's on the website. We can, we can just give them a link.
Everything's going. Just send it off.
And again, I would just like to. So the wording from Counselor Alexander's is, is essentially what was last time. So that would be included because there was a veto of that. So that's already going. But if we put this one here tonight attached to this, it would. Signal a veto and I don't want to do that. I want, everybody's on board with sending this. So, send it.
Would it include?
You, Deputy, Deputy Cabral, thank you.
You know, we're trying to arrive.
Deputy Cabral, I'm no, you, so you, your hand goes up. There's other people that want to speak. So when it's, when it's your turn, it all comes to you. So what I, what I'm asking, and it is a compromise. So the motion that has already, that was presented tonight is, is already, it's already been done once. So. And then it was vetoed. So that will be forming part of the package that's being sent. Again, if we include tonight's motion attached to this motion. It would join the two of them and therefore be applicable for veto. So I'm just saying, if we can keep them separate, it'll allow this to move forward. Thank you. CEO, Ainsworth?
Do I get to speak now?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan, and I, I would confirm that the motion passed that was presented by Counselor Alexander would be completely separate from this. However, it would form part of the letter of the series of events. Thank you.
And the vote has been called. All those in favor? And that has carried. Deputy Cabral?
I'm just curious, uh, Counselor Thompson, are you not in support of this?
Those opposed?
I was not in support of Counselor.
You're, you're, Mike, can you make a?
Fair enough.
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor Cabral. I had no clue what I was voting on.
And, and abstaining is recorded as a negative, so one, one opposed. If there's nothing further on the fly this evening, great. May I have a mover and seconder for the confirmation bylaw, please? Oh, Counselor Moore? Perform please.
And. I don't want this to be muddy. So, um. When I read the direction this morning, there was this confirming bylaw piece. So I'm going to ask Counselor Alexander if yours could be. Not part of the confirm, confirmation bylaw.
Deputy CAO?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Uh, the, the confirmatory bylaw, uh, encompasses all decisions that have been made by council at each meeting. Uh, it's part of the procedure bylaw that the council shall, um, confirm its proceedings at the end of every meeting. Should council say that motion?
Should council say that motion, um. For, that was passed earlier today, not be included as part of the confirmatory, would essentially make council say that that motion never passed. Because the confirmatory bylaw confirms that that was passed. So by saying, we pass the confirmatory bylaw minus X, Y, Z. Essentially reverses that decision and makes it as if it never existed.
Can you, can you, um. Take a second then and explain the direction this morning? So that I, I understand it. Or, or maybe Renee, you could, please.
Deputy CAO?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coghlan. Um, uh, what council saw released this morning was a mayoral decision to veto. Uh, the motion from Monday evening. And I, I will refer to it as just the motion from Monday evening. The, um, the veto. Uh, essentially vetoes a part of a bylaw, being the confirmatory bylaw relating specifically to that motion, which is referenced. Uh, through the motion number that it is, uh, assigned after the meeting. Um, so the veto was to veto a part of the confirmatory bylaw specific to that motion. The rest of the meeting, as it played out, stands. Um, just that one motion is what is vetoed. So that's what you would have seen this morning in the mayoral decision.
Follow on?
What's important to me is that. The motion or the, the, um. The events, really, of what is listed on your motion, for me, that's all that really stands out. So I don't know if we don't make it part of the confirming bylaw, then a veto is not necessary, like that loop is not necessary. It's really just, this is what happened. That's how I see it. Sorry.
I'm. I'm, I'm sorry, what it. What, what is the question here?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at, at councillor Alexander.
Councillor Alexander?
So this is more of a question because again, we're in procedural gray area here very much. Um. It, my. Concern is if it. Is not part of the confirmatory bylaw, I don't think it gets sent to the minister. It just lives in.
Deputy. Deputy CAO?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coghlan. Correct. It would mean as if it doesn't exist.
Sorry. Deputy Cabral?
But it would still form part of the minutes, correct? It wouldn't be struck from the minutes, would it? I'm just curious to know how that happens.
Deputy CAO?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coghlan. Um. And I can state with confidence that it, this is nothing that has ever happened in a municipality in Ontario. Uh, that they have removed something from their confirmatory bylaw as a council on the meeting it happened. So I could not tell you how it would be. Maneuvered procedurally, um, at, at this time.
Councillor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. And again, just from a procedure perspective, I think we're, we're, we're going around ourselves in here like a pretzel, just, just to. Avoid utilizing the legislative process, which is, which is a veto of a veto. So anyway, I, I'm going to leave it there, but I think, I think we're just going around in a circle and getting silly again.
Mover and seconder for the confirmation bylaw. Did I get that? Mover and seconder, please? Two hands. Thank you. I have councillor Moore and councillor Alexander. That bylaw twenty twenty-five zero nine four to confirm and adopt the proceedings of council at the special meeting held on November twelfth, twenty twenty-five listed here and be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. All those in favor. And that has carried and mover and for adjournment, please. Councillor Thompson? Councillor Moore, that the special meeting of the township does now adjourn at eight forty-six PM to meet again in regular meeting on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM. All those in favor? That is carried.